All right, well, um, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, April 28th, School Board Meeting to order. Ms. Hall, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase.
Here. Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Neely.
Here.
Ms. Hollerback.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Dr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Young.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to, um, agenda approval. I believe, um, Ms. Hollerback, are you, uh, willing to make a motion?
Um, I am willing to make a motion, yes. Uh, I move to approve with the following changes. Um, there are two items on for action this evening. Eight point zero one, eight point zero two. Uh, there was a third one, wasn't there?
Actually, it's nine point oh one and nine point oh two.
Okay, nine point oh one and nine point oh two. Uh, I would like to have that moved to, um, action. And, and address it with the rest of the, um, uh, head start action items, please.
Can you repeat the numbers, please?
It is nine point oh one and nine point oh two to be moved to action and incorporate, and incorporated with the, the two other head start items, which are eight point oh one, eight point oh two. So that would make that eight point oh
Eight.
Eight point oh four, correct?
Yes, second.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, is there any discussion about doing that? It seemed like that was another way of having the presenters kind of grouped together and those were going to be asked to move to action. So it seemed easy if we could do them all at, at one time. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries to approve the agenda. So next on our list is going to be our COVID-19 update given by Dr. Kizner. So, Dr. Kizner, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So what I'm going to mainly focus on is going forward, not really speak so much what we've been doing at this, up, up to this point. I think you're aware, um, because I keep sending you a lot of information. So one of the things that, um, you know, school ends for Stafford, May 29th. Uh, so we're getting into our last month of school. So we are now in the process of preparing for, uh, the 2021 school year. So there is obviously a lot of impact and uncertainties do remain, although some clarity is beginning to develop about impacts that COVID-19 is having on not only Stafford, but every school system. So let me just briefly touch upon some areas and then I'm going to expand on some of these areas. What we do know is that, um, again, you've been reading the articles, you're familiar with the research, that we are, uh, going to have to put a lot of effort and resources to support students that, uh, were struggling learners prior to, um, the, uh, closing of our buildings. Um, so we're going to have to expand our summer school program or summer learning models, which I'll talk about, uh, a little later. Um, compensatory services, students with disabilities, um, must, uh, take place throughout the follow, uh, the next school year. You might have noticed yesterday, uh, Secretary DeVos, um, uh, made a ruling that there will be no changes or waivers as relates to, uh, children with disabilities, um, so that, um, uh, we've been in a pause in many ways, but we now need to recognize when these children come back, um, we have to work to make sure their IEPs are being met. Um, we're going to talk later, but the upgrade of our technology infrastructure, along with the purchase of additional Chromebooks, um, is, uh, I would say essential because one of the things we are fully aware that regardless of when school starts, it's going to open up looking differently. It's going to probably have different parts to it, a, a face-to-face part, a online part, a hybrid part. There might be si- situations where we will start and stop and then start again. And what I want to keep reminding, uh, you as a board and our public, um, I, I applaud, um, the staff that have worked diligently to put a online learning model forward, but through the days and weeks of implementing it, we are not, um, dismissive of some of the areas where we see gaps. And, um, I sent you a, uh, um, a memo. It's in the section, uh, that I'm speaking to right now, uh, Section 301. If you want to look at that memo again, that came from our technology department. So one of the examples of accommodation that we may have to be looking at, again, a lot of unknowns, but we kind of know that we're going to have to do things differently for social distancing purposes, for minimizing large crowds and just maximizing, um, uh, safety, uh, procedures. And then one example, this is just an example, is having, uh, bus trips that are increasing in a certain neighborhood where we would have 60 or 70 children potentially on a school bus. Obviously, you can't social distance on a school bus, so we may need to have multiple rides in the same, uh, community. Other examples could be, again, I use the word could, but I'm telling you from my position on the state task force on recovery and reading a lot of what's taking place in other states and communities, we're seeing some interesting, um, but consistent trends such as smaller class sizes either being, uh, accomplished by having, uh, if you have a class of 20, just to make the math easier, you would have maybe 10 children come in in the morning, 10 children come in the afternoon, maybe 10 children come in on Monday, maybe 10 children come on on Tuesday. And that's just an example of, of, of looking at smaller class sizes. Um, adjusted school schedules, again, you could have some children coming Monday. I'm not recommending anything, I'm just giving you examples. Um, you could have some children coming in on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the following weekday come in on Tuesday and Thursday, and so on. You have a email that I did ask our, uh, school nurse, head school nurse and head of student services, um, what precautions, what do we need to do? Today, I went to the Board of Supervisor Chamber, and when I walked into the building, um, my temperature was taken right away. Good news, I have no temperature, but what, um, we have to re- recognize is that we don't have a single school that has less than, uh, you know, 600 children, and we have some schools that have 1,800, maybe as high as 2,000 students, and we only have one nurse. So, um, there's a proposal to increase at least four nurses that would be focused at the high school, and you see that, uh, memo in front of you. Um, and then there's, um, you know, one of the things that, uh, the new positions will help us. Our staff have been great, they've been champions, they've been doing their best, they've been learning from each other. We're much better today than we were when we started, uh, a month ago or so, um, but we have to, uh, continue the professional development, um, and so on. So, some other updates, just so you know, as of last Friday, we distributed 112,000 meals, um, in Stafford. The Department of Social Services will be distributing, um, cards that to families that qualify for SNAP and families that are qualified for free and reduced lunch. These are what are called EBT cards. Um, they will get these cards directly from the Department of Social Services. They will be mailed to their homes. If they're not home, if they don't live at that address, those cards will be returned to the Department of Social Services. These cards can be used at your local grocery store. Um, it is not to replace the meal distribution plan, it's just to help, um, enhance, uh, the, the nutrition and, and food options, uh, for families. And we're not exactly sure when that's starting, but we anticipate it will be starting within the next, um, few weeks. Um, you are maybe, well, I wrote to you last week on the public, middle school and kindergarten registration has started. Um, right now, we're mainly doing online registration. Middle school counselors will be eventually contacting families that are unable to access, um, through online, and we're, Carrie Neely is working with her, uh, principals to make sure that children are registered for kindergarten and reminded of the, um, shots and other records that they need to bring. Um, as already indicated, we're going to have two summer learning sessions. The first learning session will begin, uh, June 8th, that's the, um, second Monday in June. Um, for most of the students, there will be learning sessions, uh, summer learning sessions that will start in, uh, the latter part of May for some high school classes and middle school classes. And when the details are, um, better developed, I will absolutely share it, um, with the school board. And we will have another summer learning session, and that will start, um, following the Fourth of July break. And again, it will be for remediation and acceleration, and we will cover, uh, two things. We will cover the essential skills of the fourth quarter and, um, for some students, like we have done in the past, offer them, uh, new classes for, uh, credit. Um, moving on, in the budget arena related to COVID-19, um, we have been monitoring sales tax, um, revenues. Again, it's trailing two months, so we're not, at this point, know the true impact, um, for March and April. We may find out, um, in a few weeks. The calculator that we were hoping, the budget calculator that we were hoping would be out by the state, we were told today by Dr. Lane, it will be out. Um, he hopes by Friday, that's the goal he has set for Friday. He did tell us we will not see in the calculator any reduction in sales tax. That doesn't mean that's not going to happen, but they're using the sales tax projections, um, that they currently have because they don't have updated number. We were also told today that we need to start monitoring lottery funds. Um, the lottery for March of 2020 compared to March of 2019 has declined about 28%. Um, just in real dollars, just so you know, we still anticipate somewhere about $3 million more of lottery money for FY20. So, um, we have to, uh, again, uh, Dr. Lane made it clear, he doesn't want us to, um, you know, overreact, but he doesn't want us to underreact, that we should, um, be monitoring it. He believes that the governor, working with the General Assembly, will look for ways, at least in the lottery area, to offset revenue loss that school divisions, uh, may face, but there was no, um, guarantees made in that area. Um, today, I did attend the Board of Supervisor meeting. It's one action that they did take, uh, on a consensus, um, vote, not an official vote, was to, um, support, I think it's about 1.6 million more for VRS for FY, uh, for FY, um, uh, 21. Um, so, uh, that's, that's a positive thing. I did share with them that the concern that lottery and sales tax lost revenue, if we don't do it as a partner, there's a potential of being taken from our, uh, additional state dollars. The CARE Act Fund, again, we are waiting for the final allocation. It's been approved, the Virginia application, but the money has not been distributed. Uh, we're expecting somewhere between 1.4 and 1.5 million. I think I shared with you, um, that was a great disappointment. When I saw those numbers, I was sure that the state made a mistake, but when I learned more about, so for example, Spotsylvania with less children is getting twice the amount that we're getting. Arlington with the highest per pupil expenditure is getting like $7 million more than we're getting. But it is based on the Title I formula, and based on the Title I formula, we have a very low poverty rate in Stafford, and we have a high per capita income rate. So that's, that money is, can be used up to September 22, 2022. Um, it's supposed to again be linked to, uh, COVID-related, COVID-19-related activities. We are going to be, um, recommending, um, that'll be used towards remediation, uh, potentially for the additional nurses for the 202021 school year and for technology, um, upgrades. When we get the money, we could, we'll have further conversation. It does not, just so you know, require a school board action, that was told today. Um, it's just, um, uh, funding that has to be targeted towards COVID-19, um, activities. Moving along, um, I already mentioned, uh, the school routines, uh, that we believe are going to change. And, um, this Friday, um, there's an important state meeting of, of many, uh, task, of many state, uh, stakeholders that were tasked to, um, advise the state superintendent and the governor, what will it take to open up schools? And again, um, I'm fortunate that I'll be representing Stafford and participating in that. And as I learned what I believe the consensus is moving forward, obviously, I will share, um, with all of you. As already indicated, um, in my, uh, on my section that I'm discussing right now, um, we need to be ready to hit the road and run. Um, I think the community has been, um, has been patient. I think the community has been forgiving. I think the community has been appreciative of our work. Um, but, you know, these two positions that are in the budget, and I have to be truthful with you, as you already know, these positions were put in the budget prior to COVID-19, but the, um, importance obviously has, um, multiplied. And I already know we've, um, uh, yesterday, some of us looked at other school systems, including Jamana College, um, that's, there are others, communities now that are posting positions similar to these positions. So, um, by posting it, we know there's going to be a competitive, um, procedure to get qualified people, and we would like to get someone obviously sooner than later. Um, so I am asking the board, um, to support moving forward, um, the online learning system, um, position and the, um, facilitator of, of instructional, um, technology. And I'll stop here and see if you have any questions.
Yeah. If nobody else.
Okay.
Um, so in terms of the online learning and the position that you were referring to, uh, Dr. Kizner, um, when, how, how soon are we planning on getting that in? And is that, uh, part of the budget right now? Because I noticed that, um, you send a memo in, it's called, um, strategic, I think it was called, something about strategic. I don't know if you, you plan on talking about that, but, um, I no- noticed the amount, it was like, what, 2,777,000? So I'm trying to figure out, does that entail the IT facilitator? Does that entail, um, the online learning? And does that entail the Chromebooks that are needed for the underserved community?
Right, thank you. That's a great question. So let me separate it. The two positions already been approved by the Bo- School Board. Um, these are positions that you submitted to the Board of Supervisors as part of your budget, uh, approval, okay? The other ones, I feel an obligation to share with the school board and today, the Board of Supervisors and the public that might be listening, um, watching, um, our needs. Uh, i- it would be, um, wrong to me in a couple of months, uh, and hopefully wrong to you, um, that you are approached and people saying, "We don't have enough computers. Our infrastructure is not holding up, um, like the way it should be." And you then said, "Well, no one told us." So now what I'm doing to honest, I'm realistic, I know the money that, um, and when I told the Board of Supervisors today, we adopted a pre-COVID-19 budget. When I met with my staff in October, November, December, when I presented it to you in February, when you deliberated, when you adopted, and when you presented to the Board of Supervisors, COVID-19 honestly was not on our radar. So now we have a COVID-19 budget in, in Virginia, and we do one-year budgets. So we have a one-year of needs that we did not anticipate, I did not anticipate, I believe all of us would say, we did not anticipate to the degree that we have it now. So the positions, though, just to get to that point, that's the only thing I'm asking you to approve right now, okay? Um, in a perfect world, if money was not an issue, I would be asking you to look at the other things also. You're not adopting a budget until, um, you know, a couple of weeks, so we can have time for that conversation. Um, we are looking at Title I funding to help support, um, purchasing Chromebooks for the schools that are qualified under, um, Title I. But the positions are in the budget, um, that you approved, and, um, we feel strongly, I feel strongly, that we need to get, uh, these, uh, individuals on, onboard. I, I wanted to also say, you know, uh, this is not, well, it's a compliment, but it's a real fact. Um, we've been short a critical administrative position in technology since, uh, our former technology director has left. So we honest, we actually have three positions that need to be, one position absolutely needs to be filled, okay? Because Jay Hook has taken on the role of the executive director and the position that he had prior. And our needs obviously have pivoted into a much greater technology learning arena. And not only learning, it's also all of our systems. As I shared with you, one of the things we hope you will also do is, is help us move faster on these contracts. That's a ques- that's a discussion for another meeting, um, but, uh, contracts and, and payroll and everything that we're doing now is, is just like we're doing right now. I'm, I'm looking at you guys, um, in, in little boxes, okay? Um, so our world has, has changed. Um, I'm taking the position that we're going to leverage this experience and the areas that have been positive for us. Um, we're going to continue even when our schools could get back to a somewhat normal routine. So just to answer a long question, a long way to answer this, Young, to the positions that I'm asking you to approve, you actually have approved already. Um, um, but I do understand that you have not got a final approval from the Board of Supervisors. I will also remind, uh, not that I need to remind you, I actually appreciated what you, you, the message that I thought I heard loud and clear, uh, which was, uh, I'm not going to say a trial balloon. It was trying to be, uh, somewhat, uh, budgeted sensitive. When I was looking at maybe that we could reduce the director position, um, and I, I think that was one area where the board was unanimous, no, this is not the time to do that or the right thing to do. So I'll stop there. Hopefully that answered your question.
Not sure. Um, that, all of that, but, um, in, in reference to the, um, IT director and, um, um, Mr. Cook stepping in and, um, doing the job of two, I know we've done it in the past for, um, other employees where we at least gave them a little stipend, um, for their, you know, appreciating what they're doing right now and going all out for, um, so many years helping us out. So, um, I'm thinking that that's something that we should be thinking about, but I'm not going to discuss that here. Um, Dr. Kizner, I wanted to ask about, um, this, I don't know, I don't understand it very well, but, but maybe you could, um, shed some light on this admin funding, um, 990 hours, like, is that something COVID-related? So, you know, should, because we, if we closed down our schools earlier than, uh, we were supposed to because of the COVID outbreak, um, it's something about, should any school, um, miss more than five days as a result of that emergency? Is that something that we are following in that?
Okay. No, that's, I think you're actually citing Maryland.
Okay.
You're not citing Virginia. Uh, that's one thing I've learned is pretty much every state, um, uh, ADM is not administration, it's the average daily membership. Your average daily membership is based on the March 13th date, so we're, we're fine. Maryland has a whole other system. You have to do 175 days, um, of instruction. So that's the five.
Can I, this is, uh, Dr. Chase. Um, I'd just like to weigh in that I would really, I, I would support trying to get technology people on board sooner rather than later. Um, clearly, this summer, there's going to need to be professional development, um, and putting various things in place. So I think the sooner we have that support for the division, the better. But that's just, I'm just one board member, but my thoughts.
Um, you're the second one that just mentioned it, so we're, we're two right now. I mean, so there's the two of us, but, yeah. Um, so the other question I had in reference to COVID, I'm sorry, I'm taking up oxygen here, but, um, there is, uh, there are certain, um, supplies that we could, I don't know if it's in Virginia also, like, we could transfer the cost to FEMA, which is like food, water, ice, medicine, and other consumable supplies that we could get reimbursed, even though the reimbursement is going to be slower. Not sure if you're aware of that?
Every morning, we have, yes, we are fully aware of it. Every morning, we work with our local management team, and they are collecting those type of, um, receipts in a sense, and they will submit the application for Stafford.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I have so far.
Thank you.
Ms. Hazard, if I, I don't know who's next.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, this is Dr. Warner. Whoops, there is my mic. I just wanted to say that it appears that, um, there's going to be a lot of competition. Is there specificity between, um, K-12 technology, um, expertise and higher learning? Because the platforms certainly, um, are somewhat analogous, but I don't know if there's a difference there. But it also would seem like the sooner we could start, um, advertising these positions, we would be in a better place to try to fill them. So I, I think that it's definitely a critical need because we really have no way of predicting what our next, um, school year is going to look like.
Yeah, this, so, um, we'd see online position, we made it, uh, open enough because we think there's a lot of, of potential university people that might see this attractive, and people actually from the private sector also, um, for the, for the way this, uh, position would serve our, our community. So we don't see this as a K-12 endorsed teaching-type position like you'd get for the ITRTs where you need to have a teaching license.
Dr. Kizner, and Madam Chair, can we take any conversation that we're having about recruitment, um, offline and not have it in, in the broader spectrum of the public? This is something that we need to have as, as a private conversation before we can put it out to the public. So I would ask that we refrain from having this conversation right now.
Just so you know, the draft descriptions are in, uh, again, on board docs.
I understand that, but.
No, I was just saying.
But, but, but as relates to who we're considering and, and.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a better conversation had offline. Thank you.
Okay, Ma- Madam Chair, one more question because I don't think that Dr. Kizner, um, maybe I didn't hear him answer me, but I ask about the number of Chromebooks that we'll be needing for the underserved community. Do we have, uh, kind of an idea, um, how many there are? And for those that we cannot accommodate, because we cannot accommodate everybody, there are individuals that could live in Hartwood that it doesn't matter if they have a Chromebook, they still may not have access, and there are some people that live in an area that have access that cannot utilize the Chromebook. So that's where I was thinking, that this summer program that we're thinking about having it morning and afternoon or every other day, or however way we decide to have these, that is going to be, um, some of those individuals that really are going to fall behind, because as we see with this COVID-19, who actually are the underserved community that are on the front line. So those individuals are, uh, bubbling up that we need to help. Um, I was wondering if we have Um, I was wondering if we have a plan of action for those individuals? Or are we working on that? But I just wanted to know about the Chromebooks. If we do have, I know that individuals that came around and picked up the Chromebooks when I was out there at Hampton Oaks, are individuals just drive? There's individuals that don't drive that need those Chromebooks. So I'm trying to figure out if we are, are going, are we doing like a, a drive by with the bus to get them the Chromebooks like we were doing with, um, with their luncheons and their breakfast? Thank you.
Okay, okay. So the memo that I sent you and the memo that's on board docs that gives a, a breakdown of additional Chromebooks by high school, middle school and elementary school. The Chromebook distribution for FY this full year, we feel like we have met that objective. But now we need to, um, again, what we're learning, when you hear people say they're one-to-one, which we're not, one-to-one looks different depending on the school division. One-to-one in some school division means a child actually takes the computer, the laptop, the Chromebook, the iPad, whatever, home. That's theirs. They're accustomed to having that, that the liv- instructional delivery model. Others like Stafford is, and we're not one-for-one, is that it stays in the classroom. Okay, we want to move towards a one-to-one model that we do not have to go and have trunks open and you stick it in the trunk and we collect those things. Are we there yet? Of course not. Um, so I am just again, sharing with you our needs. And I feel that's my responsibility. And I also recognize the costs associated with it. But again, this is a post-COVID budget. And, uh, although we've had in our budgets, let's not, let, let's, you know, let's remind ourselves, we've had in our budgets in the past for more, um, mobile, uh, technology devices. But anyway, so I hope that memo gives you some idea of what our needs are.
Ms. Hazard, this is Ms. Haley. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, Ms. Kizner, could you put these needs together for us prior to our budget meeting? Because I think notwithstanding the money that we may get with respect to, um, funding coming in from the state or the federal government, there may be needs that we have to address in our budget. And I would like to see all of this prior to the time that we sit down and have our, our budget work session. That, that's what, that's what I would ask. I think it's really important for us to have the scope and the projected expense associated with these, uh, potential new needs that, that we'll be facing. So I'm not, not asking for that now, but I would like to, to have that available to review prior to the budget session. And, um, Madam Chairman, I know we have a lot of staff here for these other items that we have on the agenda. Um, I, I'd suggest if we have any other questions on this that we, uh, circle around and come back at the end of the meeting because I don't want to keep staff, uh, you know, any longer than we necessarily have to. We were pretty late last time and
Yeah, especially in my home.
Let them go. I think that would be a kind thing to do. Thank you.
If I also may, Madam Chair, if everybody hasn't yet, please refresh your, um, screens so that all of the items that we moved um, to action actually show in the action area when we get to it.
I, I want to at least have a record, um, if the board's going to take action on those positions. I'm not sure what Ms. Haley was actually stating. Was she stating to bring it back for later? Or we're not going to move on those two positions?
Well, if I could clarify myself, Ms. Hazard, if I may. Dr. Kizner, what I was asking was, there were a number of questions raised about different kinds of resources that may be required of, or, or necessary for our learning in the next school year. You mentioned some, the, the various board members brought some up. And what I asked is if that was something that could be addressed for us prior to the budget meeting. I wasn't specifically addressing those two positions at all. There were, um, Ms. Ms. Young mentioned Chromebooks. There's a discussion about the buses, um, you know, uh, potential changes in scheduling, those kinds of things. Before we sit down and have our budget work session, I would like to have a, a chance to, to look at that and study it so that I can weigh that in with, you know, all the other considerations that we have when we are, uh, having to adopt the budget for the coming year.
My suggestion to the board, when we get to the action item area, which would be the time to make those motions, if at the end of the initial, uh, action items, if there is a motion that would like to come forward regarding these positions, I would ask that we do it at that time, which would be with the other action items. Does that, uh, make sense for the board? All right. All right, hearing that, um, again, we will not be having our usual citizen comments in light of current events. However, always people, um, anybody can write to the board and express their, uh, concerns, compliments, any of those. So we will continue in, in that vein. So we then move on to our board committee reports, which I believe we will, um, Ms. Young will be giving the finance and budget committee report, uh, regarding their meeting on April 22nd.
Okay, yeah. I thought you were playing with me, um, Chairwoman Hazard, because this is a new computer and I've been pressing that button for five times. I'm like, oh, she's, she's on it again. I'm just kidding. Okay, so, um, for the fab, um, thank you so much, um, Dr. Warner and Dr. Chase for, um, making sure I was able to get all the information. Especially Dr. Chase, it took some minutes for me. Um, in terms of the, the, but we talked about the FY 20 and the FY 21 budget update. For FY 20, um, we talked about state funding and maintaining non-essential spending restrictions. And we also discussed, uh, projected savings of approximately 2.5 million. We discussed the stimulus funding, which is the CARES Act. And Dr. Kizner just mentioned a little bit about it. And we also discussed the FY 21 budget. Uh, we received an update from, uh, Chris and we discussed a revenue adjustment. And Dr. Kizner, our superintendent, proposed reductions for the school board to consider. And it totaled, uh, approximately 11.9 million. Um, out of that conversation, we had recommendations. We had five. The first one is the teacher scale from Chris's presentation, where we would move each teacher up one level, freeze the top of the scale and bring all service sector employees to the minimum. The cost teacher scale is 2.4 million in total. And the service scale to get everyone to the minimum is $750,000. Number two, the second recommendation, there's an agenda item for that, which is, uh, for information, 9.03. It's a revised budget calendar. We will be discussing later tonight, deciding if we will have a work session on 5/7 and a special called meeting to take action to provide staff guidance on salary changes or to go ahead and adopt the budget on 5/7 or 5/12 at our regular school board meeting. The main reason to adopt the budget earlier, sooner we adopt the budget, we can get teachers' contracts out. The third recommendation was Ferry Farm, that's 8.05, but it's probably changed the number now, I guess. Um, we supported buying the revised or amended furniture amount. And the fourth one, um, we delayed the full track, which is 8.07 replacement. But option is to just complete immediate repairs. And I think they estimated 30,000. And, uh, the last one was to approve the contract to the exterior envelope of North Stafford. And that's was 0.806. I'm not sure what number it is now. And, uh, those are all the recommendations. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I think we'll address those items as the ones, uh, we, uh, reach moving forward. So, um, Dr. Kizner, you're up next. So are there any other additional comments that you have that weren't covered in the, uh, COVID area that you would like to, uh, share with the board briefly?
Yeah, so what I'm going to do to really make it brief, I'm going to send the board an email. And we could put it on board docs also if it works, just to give you an update on the Ferry Farm renovation addition. So, uh, it's, it's, it's detailed, but, um, to save time, just so you know, we're moving ahead. We're, we have some COVID-19 related delays, but we're also able to work on other areas. Right now, we still see the, the work that needed to be completed by August 10th, uh, still on schedule. But I, I'll, I'll defer by sending you the, uh, email and then you could read it yourself and ask, uh, John or me any questions.
Madam Chair and, and Dr. Kizner, is this something that, that either can be broken down and reformatted for the school board member who represents that school to share? Or is this something that is, we shouldn't be sharing? If you could elaborate a little bit, because if this was my school, I would want to know whether I could share this with my constituents or not.
You could absolutely share it. It's being transparent and truthful and I would encourage you to share it. And I would also put it under, I will ask Ms. Haley to put it under my remarks or the public who may not have children at Ferry Farm or live in Ferry Farm want to understand it.
And may I suggest that maybe a letter going to the Ferry Farm community might be, or at least the staff, because I know this will impact them, might be something to consider as well.
And that's what I was wondering, are the staff being kept up with what is going on, especially since you have teachers that were moved out to trailers who in August are supposed to be back in their building? And the trailers are to be repurposed for another group? Um, I, you know, are they going to have time to do that? Is, when you say there have been delays, but we're ready for the 8/10 reopening, are we literally saying again that these teachers will move back into the mil- building on Friday and open their classrooms on Monday? Kind of a thing. That's what I'm curious about. How much do the teachers know?
Okay, then my email to you, I will answer all those questions. Thank you.
All right, any other, um, items, Dr. Kizner? Or was that your?
No, that's good. I'm tired of me.
All right. All right, well, moving along, our next, uh, items is number seven with consent items. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any, uh, discussion of any of the, um, are you saying the consent items in total, 701, 2 and 3?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, any discussion about any of those items? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, I will say that consent items have carried unanimously. Moving on to our action items, uh, we will be starting with 8.01 as was, uh, shared earlier. Make sure, if you can, to refresh your screen because, um, items have been moved to their appropriate place. Uh, remember, uh, we can have a motion on the table and then have discussion.
Can I make a motion to, um, to approve all the Head Start items? I think it's 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, 8 and 9.
I think we have to do them individually.
Oh, we don't?
We didn't do that last year. Okay.
Uh, because, because I didn't move them as a slate. I moved them, I moved them to be addressed individually. If it was a slate, that would be a different story.
I believe in the past, Ms. Boatwright and even before has said, especially since these are grant items, let's do them individually. If there are not lots of questions, they may move very quickly. But then there will be an individual vote on each of them. I believe in the past, we've been advised that's cleaner from that perspective. So if, so, Dr. Warner, you want to start us off at least with 8.01?
I will go ahead and make a motion, let's, uh, to approve, um, motion, uh, or item 8.01, the, um, uh, Head Start, uh,
Refunding.
Refunding application, yes. Second. Okay.
All right, there's been a, for, a move, it's been first and seconded. Do either of the motion makers have any comment? And then I'll open it up for other board members.
No comment.
Okay.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
There are a couple of these, and if maybe we can identify them immediately, we can save a little bit of time. Some of these require a match. Does anybody know, remember which one of these? Cause we had this conversation at the last meeting that, uh, one or two of these required a match. Uh, the, the question that we asked was, can we, um,
Afford.
Decline the, the grant fund if we are awarded such? Um, and the answer was yes. So can, can we kind of look at this and say which one, one of those is now? Maybe Ms. Massey can step in and tell us which ones those are?
Good evening. Um, the grants require a match right now on the Head Start refunding application and the COLA and quality. And if you, I, I was trying to bring up the, um, attachment, but my internet is going too slow to tell you what page the non-federal share is. If you can look at the table of contents, you will see the non-federal share page and that tells you what the match is. And there, most of the match amounts are things that are, um, like people's salaries that are employed right now and, um, the busing for the children, the transportation for the children and the, um, utilities and things like that. So it's, and it's already budgeted in our, in our, um, school system budget. So this, this is not really an additional funding.
Right, so, so I, I guess what I, what I'm asking is, um, and I, I remember distinctly, um, the fire and rescue folks had the same issue. We were having some financial difficulties, uh, 2009 or maybe even later, uh, with the safer brands. And we always want to be able to jump on something that the federal government's going to fund for us. Um, but if we can't provide the funds to meet that match, can, are, are we obligated to go forward with it? Or can we deny it if we are once awarded?
Um, yes, ma'am, you can certainly deny having a Head Start program and turn that back to the federal government. And so we, you know, we don't want that.
Okay.
I do have a question, um, Madam Chair, I do have, uh, actually a common or a question. So usually when it's a grant, the way how I understand grants work, if you don't use it, is not even denying it. You just give the money back, I guess, because you, you abort the program. But my question to Ms. Massey, um, this is pre-COVID. And so I was wondering, um, did they make any adjustments for that? Since we're talking about low kiddos here? And the fact that, you know, like Dr. Kizner mentioned that, you know, when we have to do, um, physical distancing, you know, with buses and stuff like that, that we might have to do, uh, double trips. This is just straight prior to, and so there's no, no way that we could expand it to say that, you know, we need some more or, you know, this is straightforward prior to COVID, right?
Ms. Young, 8.03 and 8.04 will, are somewhat focused on that portion of it, of the post-COVID. And Ms. Massey, incorrect, jump in. But those I see as our post-COVID Head Start response.
And it was said like that, there's no a- adjustments to that yet. Okay.
So, and my other comment.
She is, she is correct on that.
Okay.
Ms. Hazard is correct.
This is Dr. Chase, may I make a comment?
Sure.
So I just want to say, uh, I think it's wonderful if the federal government gives us 2.6 million and we only have to give 600,000 as our match. Um, and I just want to thank Ms. Massey for all her work putting this together. And I will be supporting it.
Thank you.
And I thought Ms. Massey's comments on when we talk about that 651,000, it's not like we have to come to the table like with closing cash. We are, it's already part of our budget. Please see that it is budgeted as part of our FY 20 budget, which includes our staff, like she said, the electricity, the buses. So it's not exactly, when we think local match, we don't walk in with a check. It's really, we are bringing our capital that has already been, in my opinion, paid for and is part of our budget. Are there any further comments on, uh, 8.01? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on, hopefully.
I make a motion that we authorize 8.02, the approval of the Head Start and early Head Start COLA and quality improvement grant application. Second.
Right, moved and seconded. Are there any specific questions about this particular one? Again, remembering that this also is FY20 already budgeted funds.
I just wanted to. Say that, again, this is one of the ones that were identified as ones that we don't have to accept, correct? And support it if that's the case, because again, we're going into territory now where we don't know where we are financially. So if we can't meet it and we can turn it down, I fully support it. Thank you.
Ms. Massey? Yeah, I just wanted to confirm with Ms. Massey, we had talked about this, and I know that there's the COLA adjustment for pay scale in there, which is no longer required by the governor's budget, but my understanding was we had flexibility in utilizing those funds. So it seems to me that this is part of a package, and that this is certainly a program that meets very large section of our underserved children that we, you know, I support fully.
And on, to make the point that this will give us some of the funds to offset any increase in salaries, and I heard you all proposing a step for teachers and those kinds of things, so this will help us not come to you all for more money to be able to meet those increases.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, third.
Are there, okay, all those in favor? Let me have a vote, just wanted to make sure there was nobody else. All those in favor of 8.02, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving to 8.03, which was moved from our information agenda. I'm going to ask Ms. Massey real quickly, just to give a, you know, couple sentences on this. We talked about this at Policy Council, but Ms. Massey, I'm turning to the expert.
We are writing this grant, and again, this is written quickly without knowing what some of our school is going to look like exactly at this point. But we are asking the federal government for funds to do a summer program for our children that are moving on to kindergarten, our Head Start children that are moving on to kindergarten. We're prioritizing those children who need the summer program the most, including those who were performing poorly at the end of March or the middle of March when we ended school, those who have IEPs that don't qualify for extended school year, and students with some social, emotional, and behavioral issues that might need the structure of this kind of program. Again, we wrote it for the maximum of coming in and having a full day program, but we know that that might not be able to happen based on whatever the health guidelines are at the time that, and hopefully we will get this funding.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Ms. Massey, so, have you, how do you identify who is going to be part of the summer program? Because even though you identified those already, if they, if we have close schools, there are probably a larger number of kiddos that are going to fall into that category. And so are you going to re-?
We're going to be asking the teachers to recommend their students.
Okay.
And I would just like to point out for the, for all board members, we are hoping to be able to offer two classes at both of our locations, which, you know, so we can minimize on the bus routes and things like that, both at Rising Star and at North Star. So, and hopefully up to 72 children, which is, you know, a great start for us. So, are there any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of 8.03, please say aye.
Aye.
Did we move to approve, we didn't move to approve it, I didn't think?
Oh, I guess I thought I had had a motion. If not, I apologize, I went right to Ms. Massey.
Yeah, no, so, move to approve 8.03.
Is that 8.04, isn't it?
It's 8.04?
No, it's 8.03.
Yeah, okay, so move to approve 8.03, approval of the grant application for Stafford Head Start 2020 Summer Program Supplement funding.
Second. I know I heard a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 8.04, would there like to be a motion before maybe asking Ms. Massey for a quick overview?
Yes, move to approve 8.04.
Second.
All right, the motion on the table, but Ms. Massey, since this was an information item, would you give us again, your, you know, couple sentence overview?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair. This, this grant doesn't even have an amount yet, because we haven't been told by the federal government what the set amount will be per child. But this is COVID funding that we are being given to help us offset whatever expenses might be forthcoming in the fall when we come back to school to help us get ready. And they really wanted us to focus on social, emotional issues, and so we are going to be using this funding when we get it for training our staff and as, in behavior specialist training, any, that we can do so that we will, I know that some of those positions were being cut from the school system budget, and we would know they're going to need that with some of our children coming back, and then training for our staff around social, emotional issues.
Are there any questions from Ms. Massey about this particular grant?
Is any of this, I'm sorry, this is Dr. Warner. Is any of these funds going to be used for additional health screening or other issues that it may have as we open school, especially in the Head Start area, to try to make sure that these kids are healthy, maybe training parents?
We did not use any of these funds for that purpose. We do have some funds that are dedicated in our regular programming for health and health screenings, which I think will be adequate for those purposes. We do know that we need the mental health piece. That's, that's a real need. It was a need before COVID, and it's going to be even stronger now.
And just wanted to give the board a small aside, I had the privilege of being at the Policy Council and having one of our teachers present, and Ms. Massey already knows, I've already talked about Ms. Amy. She talked about how she and the other Head Start teachers, their parents are all reaching out to their families. If you, if you really want to know how, how hardworking some of our teachers are and their heart for these students, just hearing them talk about it was really heartwarming. So I know, I just had to tell you all that, it was just really amazing how they're reaching out. So with that.
Thank you.
With that, all those in favor of 8.04, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Massey, for joining us this evening. Now, we're moving on to 8.05, which is the approval for the renewal of a license for Lexia Learning. Is there a motion of prior to discussion?
I move to approve the renewal of the license for Lexia Learning.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Yep, yep. Are there any additional questions concerning this, this agenda item? All right. Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor of 8.05, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries unanimously, moving on to 8.06, another approval for renewal of the license.
Yep, move to approve the renewal of the license for Read 180 program. And I also want to thank Ms. Strike, Dr. Strike, for providing us with that information about the program and how students are doing.
I believe there was a second, was that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second behind what Dr. Chase commented on, thanking Dr. Strike for all her information also.
Madam Chair, may I ask a couple of, and may comment and ask a question too? Okay, so I know that this program was vetted as a program to purchase, and so it would only be natural for us to want to know how it's working. And I do appreciate Dr. Strike's comments about that. One thing that I've come in contact with through various avenues is that there was problems with this program in the way that it was used in the school. As I understand, it's going to be used differently next year, in that the, instead of multiple teachers, it'll be one teacher, and I have concern about that. And, you know, I guess what I would really like to see is having these, these tools be options for teachers to use in a tool belt and not put on someone to use. You know, it's kind of like we just, we have an unhappy feeling when we get unfunded mandates. And I think this was one that, from what I've heard, teachers felt that there were, the training opportunities weren't, the professional development wasn't all done. So I just hope as this moves forward, that we make sure that the professional development piece gets a little more polished. It started at the beginning of the year and not later, and that, you know, that, and of course, I hope that we have a full year to evaluate this data, and that we have licenses for all the schools to use this. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Just a comment that this Lexia Learning now, this is an online platform, so that provides personalized literacy learning for students. So I am glad that Dr. Strike, I don't see any reason why we should not vote to educate as many children as possible that are having trouble with awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, and that struggle. So, yeah, I do appreciate Ms. Randall's comments, and hopefully as time, as everything else, new teachers coming in, programs, they will be improved. So thank you very much for struggling through this, and good luck next year. Thank you. And I'll be voting for this.
I, I do have a comment. Mr. Fulmer, are you on, on, online? I don't know if you got to not be on here tonight, or if you ever get to not be on here. I see that we have it budgeted for FY21, that it would be coming out of our budget, we will be approving. Is there a need to be able to approve this program now so that appropriate licenses can be used, or licensing, this is not my area, over the summer? And I'm not trying to overspend our current budget, but I'm just asking, is there a reason it's in 21 versus 20? And is the need in 20, in this particular calendar year beginning, you know, before July 1? And that may be Ms. Strike, it might be Dr. Strike, or it may be.
She's ready to answer.
I just wanted to just kind of ask that question, just to make sure we have it at the timing we need it.
And Dr. Strike just said that she could answer that question, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening, thank you, board members, I appreciate your comments too. So, the license for Read 180, last year, thus the delay, last year there was a very lengthy procurement process in place. So we only got approval with our procurement very late, and therefore the professional learning, which of course is delayed because you don't have the funding with the vendor who provides the professional learning. So that's the reason there was a delay last year. The reason why we're coming forward for this with FY21, you approved the initial purchase of this last year, and this is the renewal, it actually is in July, which is a very tricky time. So it's a very good question. You're exactly right, Chairwoman Hazard. We want to start our learning this summer and continue that professional learning for teachers. And just to comment on the implementation, every year, even if we had perfect timing with professional learning, the implementation here is, is your baseline, and it's research-based, so it's for a particular population, it requires high-level coaching in the classroom that's been going on all year with those Read 180 teachers. So it's a very specific teacher that we train to implement and deliver, and it's very much school-led in terms of who they choose to teach it. So I hope that helps.
I guess I would still ask my question too, to Mr. Fulmer, are you more comfortable it being in the FY21 budget versus 20? And please, no, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to make sure we get this, if this is needed, funded.
Well, yeah, and I am here, obviously, thanks, Hazard. So my, I haven't talked to Jan about this directly, but typically how all of our software contracts are going to, are usually operated, is this is going to pick up when the current one expires. So she's trying to get it approved in advance, instead of trying to come at the end of June and early July and then get it approved. So I don't believe there will be any lapse of, of service or renewal with this software, and Jan can confirm that. I think that answers your question as far as, I don't think it's going to put us in a position where we don't have the service at the time that we need it.
Okay, so is the intention then to use it over the summer as well? So the 20 part of it, we can use for the early summer learning, and the 21 part, we can use for the latter summer learning? Is that what my understanding is? Or will we not even have teachers available for that?
So we're in the process, so Mr. Fulmer's correct about how we just want a continuous flow of our services and our licensing, and that'll work. And Mrs. Randall, to answer your question, we're currently finalizing summer learning plans. And I know you're aware that our calendar has a start year actually in early August. So depending on those summer learning plans that come out of that middle school plan under Dr. Greider, you could very well be using pieces of Read 180. And just so you know, there are aspects of Read 180 right now that students can access from home. It is a whole classroom, tier three intervention. So obviously, we're missing that very important piece in the interaction with the Read 180 teacher. So you would want to keep, no matter what the circumstances are, the digital support for those students in this particular intervention. All good questions, but very possibly could be used in a summer school learning experience, depending on how it's delivered, if you, if you can understand that.
Okay, are there any additional questions? All right, hearing none, I will ask for all those in favor of 8.06, Read 180 license renewal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously, moving on to action item 8.07. Is there a motion prior to discussion?
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm, I'm going to support this. I was a little bit hesitant last time, based on not knowing where we were going with Ferry Farm. But at the end of the day, if we're going to open up this school, whether it's at the beginning of the year or middle of the year, we're going to need to have furniture. So these kids need a place to sit and work and be productive, so I'm going to support this.
I'm also going to support this. I'm glad that Mr. Anderson was able to answer our questions by looking back and letting us know a little more clearly what was included, as it just, I, like I said, I wanted to know what furniture we were buying, and like I said, I'm also glad he had a second look at this to make better the amount that we are to approve.
I will be supporting this, because I think that the little kiddos need to have collaborative space with nice little chairs like everybody else. And so, yeah, I'm excited about this.
Are there any other comments?
I'm excited about this, I think.
I think getting this school up and running and moving forward with it, and that includes putting furniture in it, generally speaking. So I support this.
I would like to make a similar comment. I do think going forward, having a really deep dive look at each of these contracts and making sure that we are approving what is needed, when it is needed. The last thing we want to do is have more stuff. I mean, if I could get somebody to clean out my garage, I could, you know, have people store there. But I'm just saying, we really, I think, want to be very mindful of getting the right things at the right time. So I appreciate the second look as well. But I hope that we, as a board, will continue as we go through the projects to make sure that, you know, this kind of in-depth analysis is done in light of potentially our funding challenges as we go forward in the future. So I do appreciate the second look. With that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, 8.08, is there a motion prior to discussion?
Motion to approve 8.08, a water contract contract to Eastern Waterproofing and Restoration, Phase 1 of the Exterior Envelope Repair Project at North Stafford High School.
A second?
Yes, I think I'd already heard a second. Do either of the motion makers want to make comments first?
I'll make it after.
Okay. Any other comments?
Madam Chairman, this is Ms. Healy. I have a question. I noticed, and we discussed it the last meeting, that we have an option for the Mountain View track, which I very much appreciate that we could do at a significantly less cost, although it's only temporary fix, it certainly will meet the needs for a few years. Was there any consideration in North Stafford project to look at some repair that would be on a more temporary basis that would cost significantly less than $1.3 million?
Ms. Healy, I can chime in on that. This is Chris again. We did look at that, and unfortunately with this project, our only option would be to defer the project completely until a later year. There is no interim or repair work that could be done.
And then I have a follow-up from Mr. Fulmer, long chairman, if I may. I see that this money is going to be paid from cash reserves by the county, proposed for a fall borrow. At one of our meetings, you mentioned possibly that this money would be borrowed from the Health Benefits Fund. Do we have confirmation from the Board of Supervisors that they will fund this with cash and it will not come from the school system at all?
No, ma'am, we don't have confirmation exactly where the cash reserves are coming from yet. We just know that the Board of Supervisor's intent is to continue with these projects and then borrow the money in the fall. And we know that they are going to have to identify those funding sources when they appropriate the funds with the plan being at their meeting next week, I believe.
So if this were approved, would that be subject to the appropriation of funds from the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, my last comment on this issue is this is not something that we're in dire need of at this moment. So I'm not going to support this. We are in a situation right now financially, globally. If this wasn't fixed a while ago, I don't understand why it's essential now to get it fixed. It doesn't raise a, you know, the level of safety that we would have to expend that kind of money right now when we're having to fix other things. So I'm not going to be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Sure.
So for me, the thought of bricks falling off the face of the building and hitting somebody on the head when they're entering or exiting the school, it does rise to the level of concern for me. And it is concerning to me that the earthquake in 2011 did this and that somehow this has slipped through the cracks until now. And yet, we've been able to put additions on other high schools. And I'm very concerned about letting a 300,000-square-foot high school, the largest high school and oldest high school in Stafford County, fall into disrepair before we get the next high school. And I would hate to have high school number six have to take overflow students from North Stafford because we failed to keep the building in proper repair. So I will be supporting this.
Madam Chair, I have some questions that I've been able to look over the documents that Mr. Anderson sent. And I noticed the 200-page document, as it looks like, is the document that was used to send to out for our bid, I'm assuming? But then the second document that we received from Mr. Anderson showed the pictures of the different sides of the building. But one of the things that I'm curious is, I was looking at it and trying to follow the key that was labeled on this different sides of the building. There was one side, I can't bring it up right now, but it said number five was to remove and repair bricks. And so the question I've asked several times, not sure I'm getting my point across, is how much of the brick face on all sides of the building are we talking about replacing? And as I understand, the problem is, is that when the building was originally constructed back in, well, it was opened in 81, because I attended there in 82, is that the bricks were, because it's not a brick building, it's a brick facade, that the bricks were never cleated into the building structure correctly, if I'm understanding correctly? And so we're trying to fix that in addition to the damage from the 2011 earthquake. And like I said, I'm concerned about how much brick facing and on all four sides do we absolutely need to do? Because I've been there and I just don't see four sides of the building falling apart.
I can answer that question. Ms. Randall, this is John Anderson. And the brick repairs are sort of sporadic around the facades. There's some chipped bricks and the mortar joint issues on the existing bricks that are to remain, there's some spalling going on. You have to look pretty closely to see where the mortar has actually, it's deteriorated away from the facade so that there's a gap. In some of those locations, you can actually see the ladder reinforcing from the brick, the low brick. The biggest issue with the wall is the upper five feet of the wall, which is the stacked blocks. And you're correct that those are not fastened. They just did not put the ties to the structure on those walls. So there was actually destructive testing to be able to see that. And they removed four different areas of block to be able to inspect it. And those ties were left out. There was also the damage from the earthquake, which raised some concerns at that time. But it was later, really, when they did this destructive testing on the upper blocks. There's some shifting going on with those upper blocks as well. It is visible, it's half an inch or three-quarters of an inch of shifting on the upper five foot of the wall.
This is, I don't know if Ms. Randall has another question or not.
Yeah, so again, how much brick are we talking? Are you talking about replacing the upper five foot around the whole thing and then some repairs? Or are you literally talking about removing whole face fronts of brick and replacing? Because some of it seems like a functional fix, and I don't oppose that. But then other parts of it, when you're talking full faces, seems more beautification, and I'm not for that.
Yeah, it's all functional. And the only brick that's being replaced en masse, and it's really block, is the upper five feet of the wall. The lower portions are basically being repointed where the mortar joints have spalled. Spalling is just when the mortar joint actually cracks away from the wall. And then you can see the metal reinforcement in that brick, which it's good the metal reinforcement there, sad that it's exposed. So those mortar joints to be repaired as well, that's not a major part of the project. The largest expense is the upper block, not the facet of the building.
And do you feel that is truly a safety issue? Or is this something, I mean, you said there's not, well, Chris said, not an option B, but a deferment of the project would be quote-unquote the option B? Because I like that we're seeing in all of these projects, an option A and an option B. I'm just saying, is the option do it or not do it? Or is there something in between?
Yes, ma'am, it's really do the project or not. We, and it is a safety issue. It's not the level of safety where we have to rope off the building. And I did speak with the structural engineer a good bit about this. If in the event of another earthquake, we have an issue, shifting of blocks are never good in a wall. And the upper part of the wall is probably the worst area where you can have that going on because they're more likely to fall off the building. It's definitely got a safety component. The durability of the wall is probably also as important because of the rust that's going on inside the wall. There's rusted lentils and other components that are not meant to be rusting out. So part of the project will be to repair that. There's what's called through-wall flashing that will be repaired along with the replacement of the blocks at the top. And that keeps the water out of the wall, which is going to improve the long-term durability. So it's got several advantages to doing it, the project.
We keep coming back to this earthquake thing. And I know in our other projects, when we were talking about the roofs, having insurance help. Why do we not, in this situation? I know it was 2011, so I don't know if it's 2000 and late for us. But why is it that we can't use insurance help since it was, it appeared to have happened then? What would you hold up on that?
There was some insurance funding for the earthquake damage at the time that the blocks were away from the building and they basically put them back and did not do a lot of destructive testing. There was damage to several schools around the county at that time with that 2011 earthquake. That was just one of the most significant events. That school was one of the worst situations because of the way the block came away from the wall. And I forget the rest of your question there. You had another component? I had, ready to go.
It was just about the insurance. I didn't know why we didn't get any help.
So there was some insurance coverage there. I checked with our insurance adjusters to see if there could be any funding from insurance for the replacement of the upper wall. And they said because the ties were left out of the original construction, that it's really not covered by insurance. And it's a 40-year-old building, so it's not going to be covered.
I just want to ask a real quick question, Pam, I'm sorry to interrupt. But I know my home wasn't insured if I didn't have a rider that covered earthquakes. So are all of our schools right now covered under some kind of insurance that covers earthquake damage going forward?
Yeah, we can get you that information. I know there was coverage for the 2011 event. I asked that question and there was, there were insurance funding paid for that. But we can find out more about the coverage now.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Hazard. Thank you, Ms. Hollerbeck. I was going to ask that question as one of the questions. But I'm very impressed with Ms. Randall's knowledge on construction as well as architectural, so that opens up my eyes on some stuff. But what I do know is I am not talking about just the construction. And I definitely wasn't here 2011. I know some of you were. So again, maybe this slipped through the crack. But I know North Stafford is a 40-year-old high school. It's not a rebuild and it's not going to be new. I know, piggybacking off what Dr. Chase said, that I'm not going to mention the high schools, but there's three high schools that got new wings and libraries also, so that, North Stafford. But really, this is not about any school. I support any school that is in need. And I'm looking at those children, those students, those are people's children. I'll tell you what, if we don't get this fixed, we will be paying now or will we be paying later when somebody gets hurt? I talked to Mark today. And all we care about, we might not disagree on certain things for our budget. But we do agree that what's in the best interest of our constituents' children is making sure that they are safe. We can't see COVID and we cannot see when a break is coming down. So I will support this.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick comment. In reading the summary that Mr. Anderson sent us, it's clear that there is water seeping into the structure, that envelope. And that water is going to increasingly cause damage over time. The mortar joints are starting to break down. There's problems with the windows and the doors and everything that's anchored in that structure based on that seepage of water is now creating structural problems that over time may end up costing us more to fix. Not to mention that we are now fully aware of this problem. If anything happens, we have sat here and debated this now at several meetings. And we're discussing delaying this. And we could be putting ourselves at greater risk of liability. Worse, we could be putting somebody at greater risk of being hurt if that structure does break apart, if any bricks fall off of it.
Okay.
So I support this.
All right, I'm going to make a comment first. And this is partly because I've been down this road before on a different project. My concern with our approving this is not because of the project, it's because of the funding. And my concern right now is, we have been told in the past, and I went through this with Turf Fields, saying, oh, no, don't worry, we, the Board of Supervisors, will pay the profers upfront and you won't. And it came out of our school budget. And it ended up creating a huge problem for us. It is very difficult for me to, at this point, say we don't know where that money is coming from. Is it coming from our budget, the other budget? Because we also have to look at, come the fall, our fall borrow was supposed to cover the Gary Melcher's pavement and parking lot, replacing chillers at Park Ridge, the pavement and parking lot lighting at Ferry Farm, and rebuilding chillers at Brook Point and Mountain View. My thing, my concern is figuring out, how are we going to do all of these projects in cooperation with our funding body? And it's very hard for me right now to say, it's a, just trust us, we think there'll be money. That just is very difficult for me. I really would love to have had some part of this phased, the part where there are major problems. I know that this has been broken apart into several projects because it was $2.7 million, I believe, in last year's list of projects. So it seems like it has been able to be somewhat limited. I would really have liked to have had an option for, let's start with, you know, the particular area that is most egregious and to move forward. Because I do think some of these other projects, we are going to also have to figure out how to move forward. So I will tell you, I'm sort of in a quandary all this because having been burned in the past by not having the money and being told, don't worry, we will pay for it. And then in the end, it came out of our budget. And right now, operationally, I have some concerns because I really don't have a good update on our 3R projects. What things have we gotten done? What are we sacrificing by borrowing that money now? And I don't know if that's something either Mr. Fulmer or Mr. Anderson can answer. But that's my quandary for me, is I want to, I just want to, that's just my quandary.
I can respond very quickly at a high level to know that the items that are on the fall borrow will not be impacted. So we don't have, we're not going to hit like a borrowing limit or a debt capacity on our FY21. a borrowing limit or a debt capacity on our FY21 bond borrow. I just confirmed that with the county. They're pushing these projects would not cause a delay to the projects that were already slated to be borrowed in the fall and spring next year.
Chris, it's Irene. I have a couple of questions. Well, maybe just one. What on our list does the Board of Supervisors have to approve in the spring borrow? So we could be voting on all kinds of great things like tonight or next month. How many of those are the BOS going to say, yep, nope, that's gone, nope, that's gone? How does that work?
So anything in our operating budget has already been fully appropriated. So it's just the capital projects that were not included in our operating budget, which are the items that are borrowed in the VPSA. So we have this, the Mountain View track, and this North Stafford exterior project. I don't know if you remember, last week we had the insurance projects. Those were new projects that were not included in the operating budget. That was new money, so we had to get it appropriated. So these fall under that category of a project that has to be appropriated.
Okay. So to my fellow board members, what I'm going to say to you is that I know many of our fellow Board Supervisor members, and I don't think there's an appetite for anything that doesn't rise to the occasion of, you know, overly dangerous. I don't think the brick is going to be overly dangerous. I don't think the whole, the track is going to be well-received by the Board of Supervisors. So while we can sit here and have a conversation, what I suggest is, think about, instead of wasting our time debating amongst each other, what's going to happen at the end of the day when the Board of Supervisors are the ones that are going to tell us, yep, let's get it off of our radar because this isn't rising to that occasion? So not trying to start an argument, I'm just saying that this is, it's not about us at this point. It's about what are they going to perceive this as? Thank you.
So let's, why don't we do this? Okay? Because this still doesn't stop, the buck doesn't stop here. It still has to go across the street, right? So let's go ahead and vote on this, and do what we have to do, and move on. Let's call it.
Sorry, I was trying to get back. So we are calling question on 8.01. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
No.
Nay.
No.
All right.
All right.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Ms. Healy? No.
Ms. Hollerback?
No.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. All right, moving on to 8.09. Is there a motion for discussion? There is an option A and an option B. I would ask that the motion maker choose one of the options, please.
Motion to approve option B.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say that I appreciate that we do have an option B. And going forward, especially with our financial constraints, I don't, it doesn't matter what the fund is for me, I just appreciate having more detail and an option A and an option B. I appreciate that. Well, I'll say something later. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to agree with Ms. Randall, that I appreciate having multiple options so that we can, especially in the current fiscal climate. I think that it's hard sell to spend three-quarters of a million dollars to replace a track. And I think in this particular case, repairs are appropriate. And I fully support doing just the repair.
All right. Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, this is Ms. Millie. I'm going to support this motion because I think in this fiscal environment, it is the prudent thing to do. But I do want to make sure that the replacement of this track be put back on the agenda for the time that it needs to be, which would be when this repair is scheduled to reach its lifespan. I don't want to get it lost in the, in the crowd here. But I do appreciate the staff coming up with this. I think that we certainly requested this at the last meeting. And I think all of these projects need to be looked at on a short-term and a longer-term basis to the extent that it's financially feasible. Because we are not in a position where we should be spending any more money than we absolutely need to at this point. That is my personal opinion. And I think that as a member of the community, it's really important to keep in mind, you know, where we are in the county. I don't think funding is going to get any better. And we need to really look at every dollar that we're spending. So thank you.
I second that. But I also wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Randall said about, you know, being able to have an option at all times. So this was great to have it. I do agree that we could fix this, but with physical distancing, I'm not sure when we're going to go back to normal. We may not go back to normal. So we may not be using, you know, that turf for a while. So I will vote for having the option, I think it's B, for the repairs.
Madam Chair, can I just ask one more thing? And I would use this for even, I'm a visual person, and I would even use this in the North Stafford. And I just had a brilliant idea. So I'm going to make sure I put that down, or I'm going to forget it. But I think that if Mr. Anderson, I know, with all of our social distancing and our new online way of learning and meeting and that sort of thing, I think it would really be helpful if we could get either pictures or video of what exactly the problems are. I mean, we're not all building experts. And while I sounded like I knew something about North Stafford, the truth of the matter is, that's what my husband does for a living. So he was able to give me an education based on drawings and information. So I would think it would be helpful to me, you know, when he's talking about the Mountain View track, if you could take pictures or little video and describing what is the problem. And so we can then make a better determination of, that's a cosmetic thing, or that's a really important thing. But I also agree with Ms. Healy. You know, it's, I think that this is a good fix for the now. But we definitely don't want a bigger mess like anything else down the line. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. This is Ms. Hazard. I just wanted to have one more comment. I think this is something that we as a board, as we approach the fall, I know, thinking that's a long way off, but it will get here before we know it. And over the summer is as we reexamine our 3R lists and stuff. So Mr. Anderson, I know that you've already gotten the message, but to make sure that this doesn't fall off the list, that it remains on there. But also, we need to be looking at, you know, some of these other projects. I would ask in the broader sense of taking our approved 3R list from last, I believe it was maybe November, and getting an update at some point end of the fiscal year or beginning of the next one on what did we accomplish on those lists and what things did we not accomplish? Because to me, that helps us also tell the story. One of the things, when we went out and were looking for Dr. Kizner, it was very interesting in the profile for when we searched for Dr. Benson, who, that study, as well as Dr. Kizner, was, the community was impressed with how we took care of our buildings. And so I just think it's something, as Ms. Randall said, it's very visual. Hey, we couldn't get to these projects because of these things that over, I just think we want to be able to tell that story very well. We have, and Mr. Anderson, correct me, 34 buildings? Five buildings? Probably more? That we take care of.
He's probably on mute.
Right. But I think that story is helpful of saying, here's what we were able to accomplish. But then we had these things overtake, and that's why these projects, you know, go on. I just think that's a story we will need to be telling in the future. So, and I too will be supporting this particular agenda item. So all those in favor of option B regarding somewhat emergency repairs for the Mountain View track, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Before we move on to our information items.
Madam Chair, may I make an, yeah, may I make a motion to approve the emergency hire of two tech positions, one an online overseeing online instruction, and the other, I think, instructional resource technology teacher, something like that.
Second.
Where is that?
Remember, that was referenced in Dr. Kizner's comments. He was saying he was going to be bringing that to us for approval so he could go out and begin to recruit that person for them to be onboard this summer as opposed to waiting until next fiscal year.
Yeah, and it's already part of the budget. So.
Okay. So was it updated on the agenda? Because I'm not seeing it.
No, it was not.
Can Missy put it on there?
It can be added. It would be, if you need for reference, going back to Dr. Kizner's comments, no, under his COVID comments, it would be the online learning design super designer PDF, and the facilitator of instructional technology. It's the description of those two.
Madam Chair, should I first make a motion that we add that to the agenda?
Yeah.
So I move that we add item, add to the agenda 8.09? Is that right?
8.10.
8.10, to consider authorizing Dr. Kizner to begin a search for those two tech positions.
Do you want to say consider search or to hire?
Yeah, offer, authorize to.
Authorize, okay.
And hire.
Excuse me, I don't think that the superintendent can hire, the superintendent can recruit, but only the board can hire.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. I would like to, for discussion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we know this at the beginning of an agenda, I would really prefer to have this so that we can do what we did with the head start, and have it part of the record at the beginning of the agenda. Not that it was, this is on Dr. Kizner, but just as a in a formality and how we adopt our agendas when we're voting on them. This is very unorthodox to do this at the end of an agenda. People who have already left the meeting aren't aware of what we're doing. So I'm going to support it. But I would ask that the Governance Committee take this up and make sure that this is something that is included in part of our policy going forward, that we do this at the very beginning.
But may I make a comment, which is, I absolutely agree with you, Ms. Hollerback. I would only have the caveat that the global pandemic is not really something we can plan for. And so I'd hate to codify something in policy that then might be problematic should we have another totally crazy event like this. But I.
I'm not quite sure that we didn't know about this 30 minutes before the meeting started, is my point. So a 10-minute conversation before the meeting started would have been appropriate at this point. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay. So Missy, Chairwoman Healy, uh, Chairwoman Healy, Chairwoman Hazard, can you ask Missy if she has the agenda, so we can refresh and see if it's there now?
Madam Chair, this is Missy. If I can have another 10 more seconds, I'll be done.
And, I'll just make, I'll just make a comment here.
A comment here.
I believe that, I believe that these particular positions in light of our new complete reliance on technology and the absence of our head of technology. I do believe it's a more competitive market than it may have been before. And at this point, I am willing to sort of go this unorthodox route. We also want to make sure we get the best people. And right now, I think every school system and probably every business is looking for technology people to be able to do this. So like I said, I'm not sure this is something that will always happen. But I also don't want us to miss out on trying to find the right people to fill these because we need them to be working this summer. So I agree, it's somewhat unorthodox, but I do know.
Sign of the times.
Madam Chairman, this is the board's chairman for the comment. This agenda comes out on Friday night. And the chair and the vice chair meet with the superintendent, you know, earlier in the week. But before the agenda comes out, I would suggest that if the superintendent has anything that he wants to put on the agenda for the board's approval, to take it through the agenda review process with the chair and the vice chair and put it on. That way, we don't have the issue of, you know, having a surprise, having to adjust the agenda, particularly adjusting it later in the, in the meeting, and that there's full transparency with the public. I'm going to support this motion. But I think there are all ways that this can be addressed. And they can be addressed in advance because our agenda does come out, you know, fairly close to the meeting. And there's really no reason why we should be adding, quote, "emergency" items on three days later when I'm sure that this was a fact that was known, you know, last week.
Okay.
All right. Can we refresh, Missy?
Chairman, yeah. Chairwoman Healy, I mean, I'm so sorry.
That was last year, Ms. Young.
Oh, I'm so.
All news.
I apologize. I. Chairwoman Hazard.
Yes. I'm trying to refresh, so I'm.
Yeah.
All right. I believe that now there is an 8.10. There has been a motion to add that item to the agenda. Is there?
Okay, motion to approve 8.10 authorization for the superintendent to recruit candidates for two new positions, online learning system designer and, listen up, please, there? Online learning. Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion about these particular two positions and the need? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to our two information items. Our first one is 9.03, which is the approval of revisions to the school board's budget development calendar. Ms. Young or any of the members of the Fab, do you want to give us just a quick, remember, be brief, of what the changes are and the reason for recommendation?
I will let Dr. Warner speak to that, since she was there also. So I'm just going to give you some room here. Would you like to update?
Sure. So when we met with, when the Fab met, we discussed with Mr. Fulmer, the budget changes. It was recommended that we do a work session on 5/7 with hope to pull together a budget and either for its approval for 5/12 to approve the budget. And I think the Board of Supervisors will be voting, what, Tuesday, the 5th, on the final budget. So we aren't going to have a lot of time, but given that we have contracts and other obligations that we'd like to get under motion, those two dates seem, seem critical, seem to be the most amenable to getting that done. So it's a 5/7 work session with a hope of approving a budget by May 12th.
Are there any comments? I would add the, I would just add, we don't have to have, we will schedule, should the board approve this, on the 7th, a special call meeting because we may handle the budget. Or we may also, if we are not, have ironed out everything on the budget, if there has been a decision regarding contracts or impact on our employees, there may be an ability to have a vote regarding that portion so that contracts can be begun. Is that correct, Mr. Fulmer?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I also, can I also ask, when I was looking at that calendar, I noticed that the dates, because I thought it was like a full-year calendar, and I, for next year? Am I incorrect on that? Because it, when it went through, it said March of 2019. Because it, when it went through, it said March of twenty one, but the dates were for twenty twenty. So I don't know, was the full calendar updated or partially updated? Wasn't sure as I was going through it, but March through May had twenty twenty uh dates on it. So I just, or, or, yeah, and I thought it was for twenty one.
So I, um, oh. Sorry, I'm not, not following exactly, but I can explain that it's a, it is the, it's still the twenty twenty one budget calendar. Um, but it's, so we have only amended starting in um March and April going forward, or mainly April and May going forward. Um, the, the date specific to this budget in FY twenty one.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, this is Ms. Healy. Uh, I think you, you and I are the visual ones on this board. Uh, to, to the extent that I'm, I'm, I prefer paper over uh slides. And I would request that prior to this budget uh work session, if in fact we're going to meet um virtually. And on, as we are now, that, that we have all the materials that will be discussed in advance. So that we can uh print them out and, or, or so that I can print them out and, and be able to look at them. It's, it's, it's very challenging for me to look at a number of um, of, of slides. And try to refer back to them or recall what was on number one when we're up to number twenty five. And this is really going to be a um, I, I, I foresee it can be a very difficult decision time that we're going to be at. That we're, we're not going to be adding to this budget, we're going to be looking at what we can reduce or what we can take out. So I would like to have those materials available in advance of the meeting.
Um, I, I think what we could do is, is make everybody a packet, like a three ring binder or something. And deliver it to your house or office, whatever you choose. So um, everybody will have it in an organized way that we all flip together if, if the Board would like that. We're, we're happy to do that.
I would appreciate that. I agree with Ms. Healy. I am a visual person. I like to, I need to see things in black and white and write on them. Um, so that I would, I would, I would appreciate a binder with all that data in one place.
Ditto.
Okay, I think there's going to be, now, um, I believe that we would need to um approve these changes. So they can be added to the May calendar for the public notice requirements. So is there um a appetite to move this to action? But I think from a public notice perspective, if um this is something we, we should do, so.
Sure.
So. Go ahead, Ms. Young.
Oh, no, no, go ahead. You're, you're on. I'll second it. Go ahead. I um, I guess make a motion to have a special called meeting on the seventh as a work session for the budget. And um, I guess that's the only thing I have to add and.
And we could say a scheduled special called meeting, at least it's scheduled. Because it's partly for our notice requirements, we need to have it at least scheduled. We can determine we don't need it, but I would rather have it not need it than the, the.
Certainly.
Madam Chairman, to be clear, we, we are going to have a work session on, on the seventh. With a special called meeting to follow the work. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And, and can we, can we start it a little earlier? Um, I, I don't think anybody's got a commuting issue right now.
I'm not commuting now. I'm commuting from my, my home here, so I can start earlier.
What, what time are we talking about, first of all?
Well, I, I just, I just prefer not to be finished at ten because I'm, I'm in my office right now. So when we get out at ten or ten thirty, you know, I'm, I'm moving to um, you know, to go home. So I would prefer to just start earlier and it's, it's, and honestly, I'm a lot fresher earlier.
How about, how about five thirty?
That sounds, that sounds good to me.
Dr. Kizner, doing your stuff?
Five thirty is good for me too. Anything after five.
We'll, we'll be here five thirty right at this cheer.
Okay. All right, so we are moving this to action first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then if we can have a motion to approve the revised budget calendar.
Motion to approve the revised budget calendar?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will be seeing each other next Thursday. Then the last, the last item on our information items is to approve and renew an annual subscription for Microsoft Office. Um, are there any questions concerning this particular agenda item?
Should, should we move it?
Madam Chairman, I just have a comment.
Yes.
Questions. Um, I just wanted to say that I think this is a, a benefit that we offer our employees. If I read correctly, that each of our employees is offered, is, is able to use the subscription on a home uh computer. And I think uh that it would be good to make that known to all our employees, particularly, you know, some of our uh low ones that are lower on the pay scale. Uh, may be very appreciative of this Microsoft Office uh license that would be at no cost to them for their personal use.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was going to mention, I know um, we, we've been doing this, uh, but we're in um unchatted uh territories. This is for information right now, and I'm not sure renewing it um does do something to this windows. I don't know if there's work. Um, the fact that we're doing um online and all that, is it a benefit to move this to action and get it out of the way?
I would have to defer to uh Mr. Cook. Uh, Mr. Cook, are you online?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we can uh take it now or next time. It's not going to make any difference. It's a subscription. And we're not going to lapse in service if we wait.
Okay.
I, I would say we'll just wait till the next meeting, so we will have. Next time.
Well, gee, we wouldn't have anything on action if we didn't have this.
All right. All right, well, everybody, thank you so much. Our next regularly scheduled uh meeting uh will be on May seventh, a Thursday night. Um, beginning at five thirty with a follow on special called meeting, should that be necessary. And then our next regular meeting will be on May twelfth at seven P M. I will invite everyone to uh review on May fifth, possibly, of course, the uh Board of Supervisors meeting as they make their decisions as well.
Madam Chair, can you clarify on what kind of meeting this is going to be? Is it going to be virtual or are we going to push to do this in chambers with the, with the, the distance?
I think, um, I, I think this is what I would say to board members. Stay um open to see what possibilities there might be. Because um as we maneuver numbers and stuff, um, I'd like some input from various members and also from staff of whether that. Is possible within the restrictions we, we currently have. But let's have that discussion among, um, Missy can spear that up once we get some information on whether that's.
Yeah, but, uh, okay, so my comment with that is I, I will not um, um, move ahead of uh physical distancing. Until I hear from uh the Governor that it's uh okay to do so. And so until then, um, I will continue physical distancing and so I will be online.
We could still have meetings of ten people or less with the social distancing.
Right, we can review the V B S B A. We'll see what, let, I'm just going to throw out options. We may not, but let's do that offline. I think that is something best for all of us to opine and see what's, what's possible. So um, again, I appreciate everybody um and your hard work. And everybody stay well and have a great evening. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.